Good evening. This regular meeting of July 15, 2024 of Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Jacobitz Kazier?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Nancy?
Whitman?
Here. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of America, a nation without doubt, and to the citizens of this country.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10, 2024 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10, 2024 as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that brings us to a public hearing about a bond referendum. Mr. Kelleher, are you coming up to talk about that?
Issuing bonds approximately just under $15 million worth in order to do two improvements. One, we will be adding a gymnasium at Eisenhower Elementary School along with some additional classrooms and putting a secured entrance on the building. The second part of the funds will also be used for improvements at Irving. And what we hope to do is air condition and do some remodeling, a little bit of the infrastructure there to support the HVAC update at Irving. So when we're done with that, hopefully the whole building will be air conditioned. Any questions on that?
Will that also bring greater efficiencies at Irving in that system?
Yes, it will. Yes, we hope to gain several efficiencies. Right now, the new portion of the building that was done probably 15 years ago was geothermal, and we're hoping to put geothermal in for the rest of the building.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And both of those projects were part of the original bond referen-- sorry, part of the original bond referendum that had gone to the community for a vote, right?
Correct. When we did a general obligation bond, we included all those projects in besides the middle school piece. So now we were, since the bond did not pass, we were doing these separately with sales tax money.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. At this time, if anyone has any comments related to this public hearing on the bond referendum, you're welcome to come to the microphone at this time, state your full name, limit your remarks to three minutes using our timer. Doesn't look like anyone's doing that.
I move the Board of Education adopt a resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $14,995,000 school infrastructure, sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $14,995,000 school infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelleher, you've already sat down. How will this affect cost to the community, to the taxpayers?
There will be no cost to the community because we're using the saved dollars for this project. Saved dollars are, the bond will be repaid using the one cent sales tax money that we collect.
So no additional taxing to the taxpayers of Dubuque or the Dubuque schools' boundaries?
Correct.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Bradley?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Jacobitz Kazier?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Parks?
Aye.
Nancy?
Whitman? Aye.
That motion carries. All right. I believe that brings us to board salutes, and we have one board salute.
Yes, I have that one. So a board salute goes to the many staff and community partners helping make this year's summer academy a success. Through August 2, over 200 soon-to-be second graders are spending the morning engaged in reading instruction led by certified district teachers, and then spending afternoons in enrichment activities organized by the district and offered by many community partners. Our summer academy students are filled with smiles and laughs while also keeping their brains learning. Thanks to all involved in this amazing opportunity for our students as we continue to provide support for student learning. And I know my little guy can't wait to feel better so he can join in on the fun.
Any other--
Very program.
Yeah, it is great. Mine did it a few years ago, so Henry's doing the board, the summer school, it's a good time.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. Any other board salutes? All right. That brings us to the visitors and open forum.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're starting our visitors forum with a presentation from Beth Magory from St. Mark Youth Enrichment Program.
Good evening, Board. My name is Beth Magory. I'm the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark Youth Enrichment. I'm here for two reasons today. The first is Lisa and I have been part of an amazing, an amazing group of people trying to make summer be its best place ever, giving kids opportunities to love and learn and have fun. I hung out with the foodology class this morning, and we made pasta and spaghetti sauce from scratch, and they made chocolate-covered strawberries, which were delicious. And this whole belief of summer learning week and bringing kids joy in education. And when you bring a whole bunch of librarians, I found out, I didn't know this, I have to say, I didn't know that if you bring a bunch of librarians together, you're going to solve problems. And that's what we've done with our partnership. And so librarians from all over the county, leisure services, the Boys and Girls Club, all of us partners who are giving summer an opportunity to our kids and wanting to embrace all of that and encourage you to visit all of us, because, man, we want you to come. And we want you to see your kids, because they're all of our kids. So we want to say thank you, and for Lisa for really being able to help spearhead this a little bit and with our connection with the Community Foundation. So it's been a great nine months, and we have big plans for next year. So all you wait, we're gonna, we're gonna start in August to plan for next year's summer learning week, so, super excited. My second piece is, one of my favoritest times of year is when St. Mark gets to buy thousands of packages of crayons. Thousands of packages of crayons. For our Apples for Students program, we serve 3,600 kids in the tri-states. And of that, we are buying Crayola crayons, markers, and all of those things because our community is amazing. This project costs us over $100,000 to make sure that all of these kids start that birthday right with you all, and making sure that they know that they are loved and they belong to us. So with all of that, we are a little bit, last year we were in, we were in worse shape last year, I'll tell you that. Worse shape. So we're only short $51,000 right now. Last year this time, I think I was short about $70,000. So we're getting closer. That equates out to 972 kids that we need to make sure that they have school supplies that first day. $53, that's all it takes for a kid. When I came, when I left the office, three more kids got taken care of. So we can actually say that is 969 instead. And it just makes me so happy that this community always comes through for our kids. And when it comes to school supplies, Superintendent Hawkins, you came and you saw the machine.
I did, it was wonderful.
It's an amazing machine.
I was glad to be a part of it.
Yeah, and we want to invite you all to that. And so I did bring you a lovely little gift, a little cute keychain, all of you. And if you want to come, package up some bags, see some cute things happening in our town, we're down at Five Flags the first week of August, and we're so excited. And even, you know, moving into the back-to-school bash the week before, I mean, we really just get crazy all of a sudden at school time. We only have two weeks left of summer, and all of a sudden, we're like, oh my gosh, we have to send them back to school in a couple of weeks. And so, super excited and always thankful for you and all of your support, so thank you so much. Thank you, Beth.
Any questions?
Thanks for everything you do.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you, Beth.
Sign up to go help her out and bring friends with. There's lots of, lots of different things you can do.
It's very fun.
It is.
And, yeah, I don't know, those school supplies are out at Target already, and I don't know how I feel about it, just tell you that much. Thank you, Beth. Is there anyone else, if anyone else would like to address the board, they can do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes using our timer.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Oh, sorry, Dirk. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member would like to have removed? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We are trucking through this meeting because of severe weather that's coming outside, and we want to make sure everybody can get home safely. So with that said, though, we're gonna hear from Ms. Whitman about the Facilities and Support Services Committee meeting.
Okay, I will highlight the conversations we had on July 8 for the facilities meeting. We talked about purchase professional contracts, this is with Windstar Lines for athletic charter buses for the 2024-2025 school year. McGrath Chevy of Dubuque to purchase four Chevy Express Passenger vans, and those were approved at our meeting. Update on current district projects. Senior high school, 99.9% done.
So close.
Yahoo!
The budget is on, you know, we're still within budget, and the timeline remains unchanged. Work continues with the west parking lot where concrete paving is being installed and might even be completely installed by now.
I saw today it's finished.
Yeah, there was one section left the last time I drove by, it looks phenomenal. So please drive by senior if you get a chance, it looks like a different end of the school with all that concrete. And change order number 15 in the amount of $108,548.23 for additional work in the A Wing to create eight one larger classroom, additional electrical work, west parking lot revisions for drainage, snow removal, and additional parking, duct shafts, fire rating, and mechanical revisions due to existing ceiling beams and structure. There are change orders, if you've noticed, we come with them, sometimes we're saving money, sometimes we're spending more money, but the efficiencies that we're getting because of the people in charge with these projects, if they find something that needs to be fixed or they did not know this was coming, they're making the best decision to work on things now instead of a couple of years later coming back. But we've stayed on budget, so we're still okay with these change orders. Sageville Elementary School solar project, construction is complete and the system is producing power. Lincoln Elementary School, the outdoor wellness project, old equipment is out and work has started on grading the walking paths. We're on track to have the new playground equipment installed by July 22 to be ready for the school year to begin. Preschool renovation project, all interior walls are up, 80 to 90% of painting is complete. Furniture should be delivered on July 17 this week. Still on track for opening the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year. The cafeteria tables will be coming in the fall, that's the only thing that is a little bit backordered, and, but they'll make accommodations, things will be fine. Autobahn playground replacement, old equipment has been removed and the groundwork for the district has begun. New equipment will be installed by July 22, ready for the start of the 2024 school year, Eisen, there must be alarm with the storms. I think it's a severe thunderstorm warning.
Yeah, we're okay.
Okay, we'll continue on. Eisenhower Gym Edition Project, Origin Design is working on the initial set of drawings, anticipated late fall or early winter for drawings to be completed and project to start in the spring of 2025. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project, the HVAC components are currently being, what's going on? Sorry. HVAC components are currently being looked at to do some initial drawings, and that's for Irving Mechanical Remodel Project. And the transportation siding replacement, the project consists of the design for replacement of the existing building, exterior siding, and overhead doors. So we're gonna be putting out to bid, and that project will start in August of 2024. And we went over an agreement with Origin Design, it's a contract, this is contract with Origin for their work that comes throughout the year for surveying, engineering, design, and construction-related services on an as-needed basis. And Center of Justice gave us an update, and there's three schools with the air conditioning, those that have summer school right now. Otherwise, all the other buildings, you know, trying to pare down any electrical use during the summer when no one's in the buildings, or minimal people in the buildings. Now I have some recommendations. I move the Board of Education approve change order number 15 to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school Phase II project in the increased amount of $108,548.23.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number 15 to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school Phase II project in the increased amount of $108,548.23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the transportation building improvements project and set the date, time, and location as August 5, 2024, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorization and advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the transportation building improvements project and set the date, time, and location as August 5, 2024, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with Origin Design Company for survey, engineering, design, and construction-related services for various minor district improvement projects.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with Origin Design Company for survey or engineering, design, and construction-related services for various minor district improvement projects. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thanks, Dirk. Any opposed? That motion carries.
We briefly looked at the facility beliefs in our meeting, and so we moved that the Board of Education approve the facility beliefs as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility beliefs as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Just a note, I think that we did revise them, was that a year ago, Amy?
It was a year ago, yeah.
They were substantially revised at that.
So there was no changes at our meeting?
Right.
No.
When we went.
That's just something that we have to renew as a board every year before the school year starts.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education adopt a resolution accepting endorsement that the district's insurance carrier will indemnify an employee required to give bond for faithful performance of duties required by law.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution accepting endorsement that the district's insurance carrier will indemnify an employee required to give bond for faithful performance of duties required by law. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, I keep forgetting you, Dirk. I said I would wait for you, and I just keep messing it up. All right, well, that motion carries.
Okay, we got one more motion, and I believe Mr. Kelleher will present the quarterly budget report.
So tonight I have three different pieces that I want to bring to your attention since it is the end of our fiscal year for June 30. When you look at the total revenues collected for the general fund and compare that to what we have projected, kind of our budget, you will see we've exceeded the amount that we had projected. Some of that, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, these numbers are unadjusted, we need to put our FY '23, '24 accruals, add that to this number, so that's revenue that we collect in July and August that relates back to the fiscal year, and then take out last year's FY '22 and '23 accruals because those are included in that number. So after we do those adjustments, we're still hopeful that the total revenue will still exceed what we had projected, so that's good. Another piece I want to bring to your attention is, since it's Joanne Frank is retiring, and she will be moving on, just wanted to let you know that the Nutrition Fund had an exceptional year last year. The revenues greatly exceeded the expenditures, but there's also a very important reason why that took place. Joanne and her team were frequently having to work in the kitchens. Our staff did a great job this year because many, many days, they were sufficient, they were understaffed for serving the meals. They got together, worked hard, and were able to do it on a daily basis, but they were understaffed. So that's kind of a good thing and a bad thing, bad thing that we're understaffed, but it led to reduce in expenditure. So hopefully, the new person won't have to deal with that as much as possible, but it turned out to be a great year for the Nutrition Fund for that reason. And then the last one is the Sales Tax Fund. If you look at the total expenditures, you will see in the budget area that we exceeded the amount we had projected. Again, that's because for two reasons. One, it includes the total purchase order amounts for the contracted of senior for Phase II and for the seedlings preschool. So a lot of that work will be done in July and August, and we'll get those bills later, but the PO amounts are in the encumbrances which lead to that overspending of expenditure. If we take that, it's about $2.5 million of that work that will be done on those two projects in July and August, take that away from the 1.2 million over expenditures, and obviously, we're underspent. So just wanted to bring those things to your attention. Any questions on that?
Is the understaffing in the food service program a function of not being able to hire people? Or are we budgeting for fewer than we need?
Nope. It's having enough staff, normal staff loads that we do.
Availability.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
We're thankful that the staff that is there stepped in and made sure the kids, there was nothing going wrong.
100%. They did an awesome job there.
Very hard, so we appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Our thanks to them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the budget, the quarterly budget report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you, Ms. Whitman. That brings us to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee Report from Ms. Jones.
And thank you, Nancy, for filling in for me so I could be home with my family. So our educational and policies committee meetings are every Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. on the first whole week of each month. They are open to the public, and that's where the majority of business and discussion is taken care of, so we can kind of whip through things up here. So we invite everyone to join us if they would like. We did hear from Mark Burns and Lisa Tobacor, who shared with us the new district professional development for both primary and secondary teachers that is scheduled to take place on August 16 at the Grand River Center. This will focus on systematic, multi-tiered systems of supports for academics and behaviors with breakout sessions that'll include topics such as procedures and routines, high behavior standards, student motivation and trust, classroom management, and family connections. The team is very excited to welcome back guest presenter John Hannigan, who will lead the program. And this will take place on the day following the district's kickoff meeting on August 15 at the IMAON Arena, and I'm sure everyone's just as excited about that to hear the superintendent.
Yeah.
And then we also reviewed our contract with the IJ Curriculum Program, which stands for Jobs for America's Graduates. That contract is for $150,000 for school year 2024 to 2025, and this program works with at-risk students. Lastly, we also reviewed several policies. The first one is a new one about weapons in the school district, another policy on abuse of students by school district employees on weapons, another one on threat assessment protocol, physical education, district-to-district open enrollment, and insufficient classroom space, technology and instructional materials, district vehicles, credit cards and procurement cards, naming school building sites, facilities or spaces, community use of district facilities, gifts, grants, and bequests, and news media relations. And lastly, our superintendent, Amy Hawkins, did update us on the current status of the negotiation process with the Bus Drivers Union, who are scheduled for mediation set on July 18. Is that still correct?
That is correct, yep.
Okay.
At noon.
Okay. So we look forward to that. And our next meeting is August 7, again at 4 o'clock here at the forum.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That brings us to new business.
With the summer learning week coming up, it seems appropriate to have the proclamation before us tonight, so I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing summer learning week and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing summer learning week and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Summer Learning Cooperative has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality summer programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas, summer learning week is a week to reflect on the importance of keeping our youth learning, keeping our youth learning safe and healthy every summer, ensuring they return to school in the fall, ready to succeed in the year ahead. And whereas, summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social growth while keeping children safe and healthy during the summer. And whereas, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth throughout summer programming, through summer programming. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District is committed to providing enriching summer learning experiences through our summer academy and extended school-year programs and collaborating with community partners to serve students and families. And whereas, we encourage our community to enthusiastically endorse and engage in innovative summer programs serving students and families. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim July 15 through 19 as Summer Learning Week, signed this 15th day of July, 2024. Learning Week, signed this 15th day of July 2024. I'm signing with a purple pen, so I hope that's okay. Really, really important things going on. I know as a parent with young kids in the summer, it's crucial to have these kinds of programs. So much appreciation. All right.
One of the things that I'm always pleased about when the board gets to take action at this board meeting is when we bring a student back in. And tonight, we have that before us make that motion, a student who had to be removed from the physical school setting and now has earned their way back. Can you say anything about that process? Amy, there's a contract, I believe?
Yeah, there's a contract that we make with the families and the student, and that includes a variety of things, community service, really getting the support that maybe that student needs at that time, and then different things that they have to complete prior to them meeting back with myself and Mimi Holsinger, and then usually the principal of that building. And then it's, it was, it's always exciting to hear what they've accomplished during that time, and that they're ready to come back and be engaged in the school community. So we're really excited when we can bring somebody back because we know that we want to get them to graduation, and then to see what's next for them in their future. So I've always tell them, I'm hoping to see them at graduation so I can shake their hand and then hear the exciting news of what they plan to do next.
That's great. Great process. So I move that the Board of Education allow student number 1-8-0-5-5-6-1-1-1-6 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective July 16th, 2024.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow student number 1-8-0-5-5-6-1-1-1-6 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective July 16th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there any other board member or administrative non-agenda item?
The only thing I would like to say is because a lot of our district cabinet team is sitting out in the audience, tomorrow we have our retreat, so we're preparing to get ready for the upcoming school year. We've already done a lot of work, but this is just that extra, you know, excitement that goes into the next school year. So I look forward to that tomorrow. And while we're sitting here, lots of alerts are going off on phones. And just note that you should be taking shelter at 6:45, so it's probably time to adjourn.
Yep. Please be safe, Dubuque, and we'll see you next month. We are adjourned.